So I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Nottingham Planning Board Meeting, Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, seven o'clock-ish. And I'd like to first go around the room and have board members introduce themselves. I'll start on this side of the room. Blair?
Blair Haiti, SRPC.
Charlie Anderson.
Ian McKenna.
Dirk Grotenheis.
Edward Beal.
John Moore.
Gary Anderson.
Robert Davies, Albin.
And I'll seat Mr. Davies for Ms. Mooney, who is not going to be here tonight. Couple of announcements just ahead of time. Thank you, everybody, for wearing their masks. It is currently a mandatory for this facility, but thank you for complying. And I'm sure that the Select Board is also thankful for compliance.
Very thank you. Thankful.
I also want to just make a quick announcement that if you're here for the design review subdivision for Owl Ridge, that one will be continued until January 26th at 7:00 PM. That was requested by the applicant that we continue that design review. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the design review for the subdivision from Owl Ridge Builders on Smoltry to January 26th, 2022 at 7:00 PM.
Second. Some motion and a second, thank Ian. Any discussion further? Those in favor indicate aye. Those opposed? It's unanimous for that continuance. No further notices will go out to public. So just bear in mind for those folks at home, if you do want to check in, you can look in the website, Planning Board website, into the agenda. But otherwise, we'll give that case on the 26th. We will be having our first public hearing for zoning amendments, and that will happen after our first public hearing cases, the first two. So that will be later on in the agenda. First up is a public hearing. This is an application from Estes Family Trust, its case 21-016-SUB, requesting a subdivision for four lots with existing frontage. The property is located at Canard Road. Canard is a scenic road. It's identified as map 12, lot 14.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Jagan from Ambed Engineering, representing the Estes Family Trust. Warren Estes is here tonight. Board might recall, we were here back in December, and we presented a reduced lot subdivision. Granted some waivers, and you were ready to do an approval, but you wanted to hear from the Conservation Commission. We attended the Conservation Commission's meeting on December 13th, and they did send some correspondence. I have copies if you need it, but basically, they agreed that the application is suitable. The limited cutting on the scenic road will not have a detrimental impact to the scenic road, and they put that in writing to the board. So if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but hopefully that satisfies the ability of you to grant your approval here tonight.
Appreciate that. I'll turn to Blair if there's any additional elements of responses.
No, we were, Jim was at the last meeting, but kind of, you know, I brought myself up to speed. We were waiting on the response. Sue, when we had the concom submitted something, we sent it over to the applicant, just so they had it. And it basically was a retelling of the meeting such that they were fine and comfortable with what was being planned. They added, you know, they made note of the fact that the lot two, significantly sized, more, significantly larger spot, has some tier-one habitat, and, you know, they would love to be, have a meeting with the new owners, possibly like Conservation Agency or something like that, to make it part of other land in the back there. Obviously, that's sort of like a private matter in the sense that the town and that that new owner would have to work that out.
The final thing that was mentioned is that satisfied that the proposal will cause minimal
disturbance to the natural scenic features of the area. If there are substantial alterations, though, that are made, that would fall under the purview of the commission, we request that the applicant come back before then. So if everything moves forward as planned, if nothing changes, then it looks like the concom is comfortable with what they proposed.
Great. Yeah, it does appear that, you know, we had quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting that this was heard at, and as Mr. Shagan pointed out, I think we did go through a lot of those concerns. Ultimately, just really relying on the planning board's input, wanting to make sure we got their involvement, and they have been involved. And each member does have a letter that was indicated here. It was written January 4th, or dated January 4th. So that one, the commission is satisfied with the application. I don't think there's any other outstanding issues that have been needing addressed. If there's any board members that have concerns or other issues, just let me know. Otherwise, if we could, yes.
I just have a quick, do we have any feedback from Sean, DPW? Probably. There was driveway locations or stake, but did we receive any feedback? I was curious if we did.
Has Sean provided any input back?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Well, that's just something that he's had the ability to review this application.
Yeah, I think my only thing is just to make sure, in any conditions, is to make sure the driveway, the final driveway locations are obviously permitted and reviewed with Director of Public Works, just for the need for culverts or something like that. It's the thing that some of these, some of these areas don't look like they have ditch lines, but I'm looking more at like lot three, that might need a driveway culvert. I can't tell if that's a D-line there shown for a car, but just something to note for, which hopefully Sean will take care of during that process.
The private driveway permit. We do have some, some specific regulations about the driveway, so they have to, like the first 12 feet is supposed to be paved, and then they're supposed to, you know, sort of degrade it away from the road, a negative grade, sorry. Basically, they're going to walk from either road and then the road agent will advise if a culvert is needed, with the culvert size of their process.
Who would imagine that would be part of the building permit process?
Yep.
Yeah, they're not going to put the driveways in right away. I think the applicant's going to just build on one of the lots in the short term, so.
The state, you can very plausible draw on it, see in both directions. For us, and for the general public. And the only thing I still had outstanding was just, obviously, we talked about it, about adding a note or just clarifying language as to that the current path that kind of goes from lot three, which shows lot three to the back lot that's under ownership, because that's not, you know, an easement, there's no access, it's not proposed driveway or anything like that.
Correct. That, I believe, at the meeting I had indicated that, my understanding was that we did research the deeds for both the locusts and the parcel in the back, and find any indication of a right that was deeded, and I did confirm that that's the case. Would call Darberstein, so, but if there's a note there that you want to put on there about that abandonment or something in relation to that, to a little turnout, which is labeled, you know, gravel drive.
It would be helpful to have something that way, you know, someone else are going to just plan years from now, doesn't say, well, what, you know, this is John here, I was planning the access, potentially, with that lot, especially where across the level, it's something I don't want.
I think adding a note would be helpful.
So we could probably just take the word gravel drive off. That would be one thing to do. Are you saying, what would be the other note that you would want?
I think we'd probably want to do something along the lines of, this approval does not grant any access rights to map 11, lot eight, via the trail shown. I mean, however you want to describe it, though, east side of lot three.
Okay, yeah, that's a good note.
Yeah. Just that it's an approval that construe to some approval of that access.
Any other comments from the board? Can we get a motion on this with maybe adding that condition for the note, just the removal of the gravel drive?
I move to approve case 21-016-SUB to include conditional noting regarding gravel driveway and that that will not access lot 11-8.
Second. Any other, yes?
So just to be clear, I sort of crafted a note to go through. This plan approval does not convey any rights to the use of the gravel path as shown to map 11, lot eight. Is that suitable?
Yeah. Sounds great. Thank you.
And we'll take out the word gravel drive.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, before, obviously, the law, it's all the standard conditions of monuments set, the state permits, they go along with it.
Yes, I understand. Yep, we'll be putting on the, yep, we did get state approval, that number can go on here, and we did set the monuments, and we can update the Mylar for that.
To include the monument set and Mylar.
Okay, so the, there's a motion in, that's second, and appreciate the clarification on the note. Those in favor indicate aye. Those opposed? That's unanimous, so.
Great.
That's approved, and when you get the Mylar set and ready with that note on it, bring them in, and we'll sign it.
Okay. Do you do that at a regular meeting, or we drop the Mylar off, and then somebody comes in at some point?
Well, we can, it depends on the timing.
Yeah, I don't feel that you're in a big rush, or?
If you have tight constraints, we'll just do it at the next meeting.
We could come back next, we could have the Mylar here for you next month.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Next case is number 21-017-SUB, the application from Roger Lyndon Bevins, requesting to subdivide one lot into three single-family lots. This property is located at 38 Canard Road. Canard is a scenic road, identified as map 13, lot three. This was a very similar scenario where the applicant needed to go to the Conservation Commission, which was done, and there's a letter in each member's package. The applicant could just maybe bring us up to speed with what that meeting was?
Yep, we went, Scott Frank was from New Hampshire Land Consultants. Rodney is Roger Bevins. We went to the Conservation Commission Monday night and described the project, and they wrote the letter saying they have no problem with their locations of the driveways, they are existing driveways that are currently out there. We don't plan to take any more walls down or trees down, so. And at the last meeting, there was a discussion about asking the road agent that was on this application as well. I don't know if anything came back from the road agent on that. I haven't seen any.
About the driveways?
Yeah, at the last, yeah.
Oh, I haven't, we have not seen any, any comments from the road agent?
Pretty straight, pretty open area on that side, except for obviously the lot that's the east of the house, you know, the slope there and everything. Where the cut is now, is where the driveway is, it's.
And a big discussion at the last meeting was the 30,000 square foot area, which was, you guys are going to seek legal counsel on that, and I haven't heard anything, and so we haven't revised any plans to, or done any more test bits or anything on this, if we needed to get direction on that.
Yeah, unfortunately, we've had no response. We, it's been a pretty busy holiday season, so there hasn't been a lot of back and forth. Also, the, so we don't have an answer for that, but I would like that the Planning Board talk about this a little bit and explore what the, what the best course of action could be for this applicant. And let me, let me just put a pin in that, and then go to Blair and just ask you if there's other items before we get into that 40K or 30K question. There was other, anything you had report?
No, I circulated Sue's letter, as Scott indicated. It was sort of a retelling of the, of the discussion, and they made note that, you know, they didn't anticipate any adverse effects to, there were no other proposed impacts noted for wetlands nor steep slopes. I think the one thing that was pointed out that with regards to lot three and the existing structure, if it's torn down and relocated, it was noted that accommodations, for example, culvert, to reduce impacts to the adjacent wetland be planned. Beyond that, you know, they didn't expect minimal, if any, need for stone walls removed or the driveways, and again, if any substantial alterations were to happen, that they would come back, which would, very similar to the previous one.
So I guess the, we'll get back now to this, you know, 30K. So there's, current condition is there's an existing house, doesn't fall within the current zone offer setbacks to make this 30K for the upland, is that right?
Just a note on that, that his house was built in 1793 before, or it was a wagon path, probably.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we determined that within that setback area, there's, even if you overlap the house, that they, that wasn't 30K. I think Ed was the one that mentioned, like, possibly the need to extend the western property line further west.
Yeah, so the reason this came over the question, please, is so if there were no houses there right now, we would expect the 30K area at the back to be what was going to be where a house can be placed, is that, that would be the definition? And if, we've had, you know, some examples, I think it was one, where the house was placed on a upland soil front that wasn't 30,000. It was a zoning to get a variance because of, obviously, to get up to the top part, they had to do a lot more safety services, and it was very slow. But where we are with this one is it's a not, maybe a non-conforming lot of record or non-conformity structure, you know, that doesn't meet the current setbacks. So would we be increasing the non-conformity? Because right now, it probably does sit on the 30,000 square foot contiguous area, but we dropped that lot line there, we've all of a sudden made it more non-conforming. That was my, kind of my question as to how do we perceive it to be? Could they have to go to zoning for relief of that?
But the other thing is said that if something happened to that house, it has to be put back on that same foundation. Is that correct? The same area, and you're going to get a year?
Yeah, there is language in the zoning about, yes. Yeah, it's on restoration, not destroyed voluntarily, so, fire.
Great.
Flood. The frustration, you know, twelve months, I bet, starting, you know, within two years, until it's done, which is about a fall, and then they give, assumption for a single-family
Yeah, I mean, this, this has been a single-family home, will continue to be a single-family home. It's not being rebuilt, it's an existing leach field system. The other, the other two properties, you know, have plenty of area, right? So there's, they're not even close to being the minimums.
I think that's what leads me to think, if we looked at this and maybe didn't look as much at the lot lines, and we were looking at this as if we were creating it from scratch, if, say, the western lot line was moved so that you could have a 30K area within that front area, and the intent is always to keep the existing house there, I mean, I guess with an existing house, served by its, some existing well and existing leach field, is there a need to show or prove out a 30K, you know, say if we didn't have some of these site constraints? I understand that sometimes you do have to do some test fits to prove out an existing leach field isn't failing or something like that, but, I mean, my, my take is that showing the 30K out back is more of a backup, or if they did decide to rebuild, it, it just proves out that there is the alternative location lot to build. They could even move, show that their protected well radius works back there, too, as an alternative, but.
Yeah.
Look at it as an existing use that they intend to continue using.
And even the, the 30K on the adjacent property, the, is even, you know, further setback from the property line. So that, you know, being designed, even the 4,000K, the 4,000 square foot area for the septic is, you know, significantly far from the septic system of the existing house. So whether you move that lot line or not, you're still going to have that same location of the 4K in the new lot. Environmentally, I don't see that there's any real issues with.
I would definitely, just because it's an existing home, I think that's, obviously, I think we have to take that, or take it in a little bit differently.
Right. Yeah, if it was brand-new, then we'd be approving, or the applicant would have to request a wetlands crossing, almost. I think there was a little area to squeak through.
Yeah.
But then you're up on a hill, and, you know, some other things that are happening in that back lot that, in whole, these three parcels.
Because I guess my thing, too, is I look at this, you know, they're proposing a 4.71 acre lot. I don't think there's anything to say that they couldn't come in and propose a two-acre lot around the existing home if they wanted to.
Right.
If the existing home continues to operate as an existing home. And then you wouldn't, I mean, if you did that, if you pulled that back lot line forward to get to your two acres, you would have no way of showing the alternative 30K.
Right, I think in that concern, we, we would may have some concerns if the overall lot was smaller to the two acres, and they couldn't get at the.
No alternatives.
No alternatives, then certainly we'd be looking at that a little bit differently. But this lot is, you know, almost five acres.
Yep.
Adjacent lot, what's the size of that?
The western, biggest one. Which is, which is?
12 acres. 12 acres.
We had a lot of discussion about when we were planning it out, as far as why the 30,000 square foot was required on a house that was existing with septic and well and everything. Wife and I, not so much Scott.
Yeah, it, it's all really dependent on the septic system size and how many bedrooms.
I think what we're having here is, I think they could, I mean, somebody could have come in with a proposal for a much smaller lot, potentially, and meet the regulation. But here, we're getting a much larger lot, that this 4.71 acres can't be further subdivided because there's wetlands, and there's, you know, limitations on frontage. Basically, we're locking up a 4.7.
And if the house was, if, even if the house wasn't there, you wouldn't have to go for a zoning variance, because you have the area in the back.
But if the house wasn't there, area in the back would be, except, would be the 30K area, not be where the house would have been, that's where any building permit pulled would have the Dallas back in that.
And any building permit that gets pulled would have to be built back there, because we wouldn't be able to rebuild that house.
Yeah, yeah, if I want to listen up a little more, just make sure we can discuss, make sure we understood, you know, does that pose any, that was, or are we, or are we not doing that because it's got 30K area elsewhere? They're going to add a note, I imagine, to say that, that, that's where the house would be built, if, if, if this house were being in or destroyed, unless the provisions are applied.
Yeah, I like that we're kind of locking up this larger lot.
Yeah, I kind of like having these larger lots anyway.
Yeah.
What was the question that we asked legal?
We didn't ask them, because they've been, we've been out, they've been out, all of that kind of stuff. The question was going to be whether this would have to go to a ZBA to get a variance for the 30K. But I think we may have just talked through some of that.
Yep.
That, I, I mean, I would be comfortable of not having that go to the ZBA, because there's 30K available that they could use.
62,000 square feet available.
Yeah, 62,000 square feet available, so twice as much. Yeah.
There's no, I don't know, I think Mr. McKenna brought it up on another case recently, does that lot, the space in the back, does that kind of reserve strip, or is that?
Yeah, I was just going to ask about that, the width of that. The subdivision regs, section 14.2.2, number three, the back of that just has to be 75 feet wide. Well, that's, doesn't, you know, affect what we were talking about before, just going to reduce potentially that acreage for lot three slightly, but that just needs to be 75 foot wide perpendicularly to the lot line. Still give you the same thing you're looking to do.
Any other questions from the board? Can we get a motion on this, to include that 75 feet?
Yeah, we need to.
Open the public hearing?
Well, that, for that, for that provision, if we're going to get updated plan, show that area moved, that, that, we need to, you show.
I think if we, I think there's just so much length.
Any continuance or? I don't think so. I mean, that's really administrative, right, to make that lot line adjusted minor, right? Because this has to get moved this way, by another 25 feet. I mean, the numbers are all updated, but I don't, I don't think there needs to be a continuance for it.
There's no waivers for.
We'll be making one change to the plan, which is the name, it's actually under a trust, instead of Roger and Lyndon. It's just a change for the, for that as well, but.
Let me just wait one second, let me open the public. Uh, just, let me just wait one second, let me open the public hearing, because it's open from previously. Uh, anybody in the public want to talk to, for, or against this application? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. So, yeah, now I'm ready.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve case number two one dash zero one seven dash S U B. Um, with standard conditions of approval, fees, milars, loss, uh, that the applicant revised the rear reserve strip, access strip to seventy five feet wide on the final plan. An update areas accordingly.
Second. Motion and second by Gary, thank you, uh, any other comments?
We want to just note or something that change in the name. But, I mean, it's not probably a zoning practice.
And the change in the name.
Sure.
Sure, we can include. Yep, that's fine, add that to the. Okay, um, those in favor indicate aye, those opposed?
Right.
Were you, are you with us?
Yes. Sorry, I was writing, so I was looking down.
How's unanimous?
My bad.
Bravo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Back in the seventies, I sat with you guys for a while ago. Planning board, zoning board.
Hey, we always have room for all that to, uh.
Yeah, don't we have a seat open?
Elections are happening in March.
Yeah, I know. We got to serve selectmen, half a selectman's term when Spofford, Mr. Spofford had a stroke. But it was a long time ago.
Well, thank you for serving.
Thank you. All right, then we've got some other business here. Lot line adjustment application completion decision. Case two ninety two dash zero zero one L L A Kelly.
This was a, this is one where we were required to hold the, to, like, take timelines, we're required to, um, act on the application within the thirty days, because that puts us on the night, but after we act on that, after, we're just to, uh, January twenty sixth.
So we received this application. Is the application in the packet here?
Uh, it was.
So I guess Kevin or Blair, it probably turned to you to confirm its completeness. Now, is there anybody here? Say that again?
Is there anybody here from the applicant that wanted to just quickly give a.
Is anyone here from the applicant, applicant for this case?
I have not looked at it, because I just was going assumptions on the next meeting, so I have not.
I did look at it, it looks like everything's filled out on the application. Yeah. Gonna check those completely.
So it appears there's enough information that.
Yeah.
Complete, because it is, looks like it's a pretty simple lot on each other. They asked, did they ask for any waivers or?
No waivers.
Yeah. So what? Make a motion up here.
So I guess I would ask if there's a motion to accept the application.
I'll make a motion that case number two two dash zero zero one dash L L A be deemed complete. The application is complete and ready for review.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion, those in favor? Get aye. All right, unanimous again. You guys get multitasking here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we continue the case for number twenty two dash zero zero one dash L L A to January twenty sixth, twenty twenty two at seven P M.
Motion is second, those in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you for making that. Okay. So now, next thing on our agenda would be the, uh, the actual zoning amendments, so this would be the public hearing for zoning amendments that the planning board has talked about in the past. These zoning amendments include the, uh, the building height. So that's, uh, structure, building heights, steep slopes, and driveway setbacks. And, um, those zoning amendments and the language for those are posted, but we can go through them. We will go through them. Here and, uh. Someone gonna show, Blair, are you gonna show something, or?
I was just gonna put it up there so you could see it, so we could like edit it in real time, that was gonna, that was the idea behind it. Um, you know, we can just talk through it, but.
So what we'll do here is we'll just, um, talk through the language of these and then have the public hearing if, uh, any public wants to have input for each one of these potential warrant articles. And while they're setting something up there, um, today is the last day to hold our first public hearing. It's not the last day, January seventeenth is, but this is the last time we can do that, so January twelfth. And then we can determine after this if a second hearing is necessary. And if a second hearing is necessary. When's the last day?
Derek, I have a question.
January twentieth, yes.
Just a question of clarification, this letter from Ian on twelve five is what this article is based on, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, with, we had a couple of minor tweaks we talked about at the meeting, it was some language tweaks.
Okay, so this was the original, twelve five.
The twelve five.
This is the final version, Ian.
Correct, the one that you see in your packet that has amendment X at the top, that is the cleaned up language from my.
Well, I wanted to make sure of it.
Yeah, because we met, uh, December twenty second.
Was, I'm not sure if you were here for that meeting, but we, we met to talk specifically about these, so we made a couple of edits to them.
No, I have my own thing on the three, so I think standard practice in the past is we just get town council review of the proposal, push into the warrant article. Unless substantial changes tonight or questions, uh, that you have to, one good reason to hold a second hearing is we have feedback saying.
Yep.
We should make a change.
What did you say the timeline was, if we wanted to have a second one? Is it February?
Oh, I see here.
I think we have to go by the next, by the next ten, I think.
The twenty sixth? Because of the way the.
Well, how are we gonna get, how are we gonna answer from council?
So my only question is, are we gonna be able to even council turn around any feedback before a second hearing? Because they, they review it by standard, right, before anything goes?
So the twenty sixth is our next hearing.
Makes them not opposed to keeping it, if we get to that point.
I just gotta schedule two minutes, you have.
The thirty first is the last day for public, first, final public hearing of proposed zoning.
Twenty six just happens to fall on our regular meeting schedule, that's all.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So we could, yeah.
Well, we'll, I mean, we'll send it to legal and, you know, based on this.
Maybe they'll get back to us.
Maybe they'll get back to us. Okay, who's, who's driving, you driving Blair?
I'm driving, yep. So the document here is the same one that you have in the packet, how up here, uh, of the warrant, what's we get? The X's would be filled in with, the virtual speaking.
Yeah.
But what you can see here, this is the proposed amendment, this is just telling you the section that's in, and this is the actual language of it. So, blue, underlined, the language is petitions, red, strike through, includes subtraction, subtractions. I don't actually think we have any subtractions, but, I don't know. So, this is, this is the text and, you know, we went through it at the last meeting, if there's any, uh, changes, then I can, you know, type them out and talk to you about it, so you guys can see what it looks like. This is in real time, um, but basically this is reflective of what we discussed in previous, this one and the other two. Um, it's just. So this particular law, the whole meeting, that definition section, we're adding three definitions, building height, great plane, parapet. Building height being the, the page of this, and it has the drawing examples on the second page. Is that any work is?
Double check.
Oh, I caught. On the, uh, I'm not, I can edit this, because it's from my computer, but, um, it's on the image on the second page. Bottom where I say, just the definition of building height equals average around building at old cars and midpoints of exterior walls, and another time there.
Oh.
I'll take this, that's an easy fix, I just need to add another L.
Um.
Genius spelling.
Yeah, that's part of the image, I can, I can do it without it.
Yeah, I can do it, I can, I can get that back to you tomorrow.
That's it, I know that will change this.
No, I don't.
I'll read for a, a second meeting.
I know it'll bug me if I ever see it in the future.
Yes, it will do, it will do.
So, words in dot language, I know it's kind of like a, a quick summary as to what the intent of this is, so words says adopt the new definition of methodology for building height, this only additional related definitions. So that's basically, I know, we talked about it before, it's, we're trying to clarify based on responses from the building inspector and fire chief. Should we add a little bit of verbiage here, saying no change to actual building height proposed, or have, or just give it off and?
You can almost say there is currently no definition of what building height.
Right. We don't, yeah, that's the problem, you don't find how to measure building height, how to have maximum building height.
Yeah.
I mean, we can certainly add it, I actually, it's, I don't know what, you know, the restrictions are for dot language part of this, but, uh, I, what you're saying is accurate, that you're not changing the, the height, the maximum height.
Yeah, I don't.
Because I guess a lot of people would actually probably think that, oh, what does this mean? Just one.
So, in other words, propose building height change. But that's the wording we're looking for.
Yeah. Look, change for the actual building heights.
Very sad. We could just probably leave it at that.
Changes.
I guess it's easy to make that point, because that makes this less, for someone that's like looking it over, it's important. It's just more than, by knowledge, more about the knowledge.
Yeah, well, I think it's good to have the definition and have things clear, you know, place a reference and measure and explain that. What I looked at other towns, we're actually kind of lacking anyway, is to, you know, surrounding towns, what's building, um, how, how, what building heights are and. Other structures, being our cultural way to talk about special exceptions, like silos, church stables.
So I'm gonna, uh, reverse role, and I'm gonna play Ed's position now, and be devil's advocate. If, if we're adding this parapet, you know, to a definition, I'd, I'd hate to say that it's not gonna change the building height, because someone may think that my building height did not include a parapet and now it does. So now I'm limited. So there, I just don't like those absolute, this does not change our building height, statements, I just would rather say.
Because each, each case can be determined.
Yeah, because we're adding definitions to clarify it, I'd rather say, you know, this, our current building height definition, I don't know, this just adds more information for our building height, I don't know how it's measured or.
Another way of looking at it is that if we try to, uh, refer to this being, this not changing the building height, that opens the argument that we are changing the building height. So if, if there are, if there are people that are on one side of how this measurement is being done and people that are on the other side, now they've got an argument as to why this, this isn't gonna be any good.
It might be just, you know, that this adds clarification to our existing building height requirements.
I think we ought to just leave it as a definition.
Okay.
I think it's fine to, during the argument, it doesn't make sense to, not say something about, very culturated.
Really where this comes into play is not as much from the applicant's point of view, but more for the building inspector to have some some authority, and something to.
Right, because there are different departments in town that were interpreting things differently.
Right.
So this is a definition.
Even looking at the concrete, make sure, so they have it based on districts, obviously, you have parts of concrete that have a height or three, so they allow higher building height, uh, areas that are more or outside that, our town, they, it was thirty four, thirty five feet, that they limited to as well.
Clarity is the word, so, about the property.
So just leave that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we talked around it.
Do we want to change anything related to the, the actual zoning language?
I don't think so.
You know, and in each district, actually, that's a, the maximum building height, so I know the way it's measured is gonna be a little bit different, so I think that, that hopefully, kind of like the fire chief wants a maximum thirty four feet, and that's the reason for it, hopefully, between the two, we're, we're meeting. Be the needs of the emergency response side and the enforcement side.
Okay, so that one can stand.
Go over nothing to some.
Okay, and then what's the next one? We're gonna move on to the next one?
I'll, I'll move by.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Do we want to take it one by one with the public?
Sure, um, we can take this one by one by the public, uh, if, if there's any interest in commenting on, uh, the building height amendment, or the welcome to provide input.
Can you have a number? Yeah, and so we, thirty five or thirty four feet, you should put it, that, that thirty five feet will be measured from point A to point B.
So we do, there.
Will become the average of the measurements of point A, point B, point C, and point D, the average will be not more than or not less than, uh, P. So write out the numbers.
So, in, in another, where we do have the building height, there is a number in that part, just not in this definition. Is that right?
Yeah, in each zone, so we have it by, um.
By zones.
And I think the way that is right now is, if we leave it, this definition is defining how building height is measured and then leave the actual building height definitions for maximum building height. In each zone, it allows for potential changes in the future, say like the commercial industrial zone. Or maybe that was an area where we could reset. Living spaces above a certain number of feet, um, allows to just kind of, yeah, through the zones as opposed to going into, adding more language into the definition. Covering it out there.
I didn't know that building heights vary from zone.
Right now, they don't. Right now, each, each zone says, uh, says thirty-four feet. But, but it's listed in each zone, um, building, actually, building height, shall be thirty-four feet, measured three, maximum building height, thirty-four feet.
Main issue is, yeah, the main issue is that the term building height before was only mentioned where it says what the thirty-four is, one sentence. There was nothing to, to depict how.
How you do, how you measure that thirty-four feet?
How that is, how you come up with that thirty-four.
So, the definition that we're presenting tonight defines how that's actually measured.
Right.
But the value measurement is already in our zone.
And part of, part of the other reason is it's in zones, so it is this way in the zone now. So, like, commercial industrial, we say, build maximum building height is thirty-four feet. Um, first above thirty-four feet may be allowed by special exception. So, maybe in the carzal language as to how you can achieve that without having to get full variance. I think this is important to spell it out, just like you had.
Thank you.
And we, I'm sorry, sir, we should have asked, um, you state your name, uh, for the record. Or if you planned in, should have asked.
Next, next slide.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any other comments, public or otherwise, on this? We can move forward. Okay? So, we'll get into the steep slopes.
Steep slope, yeah. The big one on this was we went from, I think the original language was fifteen, right? But we said, we're gonna mimic our existing twenty-five percent?
Yeah, we, yeah, at the meeting on the twenty-second, we kind of talked through the slopes of the fifteen and the twenty-five. Twenty-five better matches with a lot of our other, um, language.
And then we had that minimum, two thousand square feet contiguous.
Yeah.
So, can I ask a question?
Yep.
What happens if you've got a piece of property that's greater than twenty-five feet slope?
Also, if you exceed the twenty-five percent threshold?
There's restrictions on those areas. That's what will happen. But, but what can, can be done with those? Just further protection of those slopes.
So, if I keep thinking about this, I feel like maybe, I know this has been on our agenda for a while, but, um, I wonder if we're actually making our zoning less restrictive when it comes to, to steep slope areas. 'Cause right now, you know, they're basically not buildable. If you can be counted in contiguous areas. But if we add this language in, does that negate? Does that negate the protection for those areas that we talked about before? Are we carrying around?
That discussion, where, is that in the definitions where it talks about how it can't be counted as contiguous?
Yeah, fit for building.
Fit for building, right?
So, the, the lot envelope, we, the, we talked about, we've got fit for building, not fit for building. So, fit for building is, uh, any land, blah, blah, it is not, if slopes are twenty-five percent or more. Not fit for building is opposite of that. So, the lot envelope, the last sentence of it, the lot envelope should, shall not include areas, either areas on fit for building and the probably setback will don't accept acts. So, is this contradictory to that?
Uh, I don't, I don't think it is, um, because you're talking about building, you know, a building, right? In that unfit for, for building location? But this covers, you know, grading and earth moving throughout the whole site. So, anything that's outside of that area, we don't have anything that regulates the twenty-five percent slope to protect it from being graded or earth moved around, cut and fill. Whereas, whereas that's what's adding in with this, with this amendment.
Mr. Ed's point, is there a benefit potentially? Because I think by adding this, I think we're gonna have a lot more applicants or their representatives going straight to this in terms of, hey, I have twenty-five percent slopes on my site, what can I do, what can I do? Is there a way, should we reiterate? 'Cause like, as I know Ed, one of you should bring this up, is the fit for building where it cannot be counted. For like, until you assert buildable area, is there a place in here that we can, I don't know if it fits under performance standards really, but it's basically just reiterating that it cannot be counted for buildable area? Or consolidate all the restrictions caused by twenty-five percent?
Even in the stuff, stuff we're actually, we thought, you know, the critical area. And we mentioned steep slopes a bunch of different times and what additional things come along with that. Building envelope shall, shall not, should not include areas with slopes excess of twenty-five percent.
I, I, I guess I'd go take like five steps backwards and say, man, why did we do this? Why are we talking about this today?
The intent is to get protection better, so better protection for them.
Well, we put a lot of time and effort into this, so.
But if you're like, this isn't.
We don't feel like, or if you, I, I, I don't know why we're, I would at this point in this conversation, because we've gone through this
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it degrades or provides, if anything, I think it closes loopholes because right now, it's all interpretive where it's because of an application. We have to be the ones to see that, recognize that it might be an area to protect, but, um, I think it's of a great value. A lot of towns do have, uh, pretty detailed overlay districts with restrictions. But I do see, maybe there is a benefit to just clarifying, specifically within here, that, just saying that areas of twenty-five percent or greater that meet the two thousand foot contiguous area cannot be counted as contiguous area for building. Again, just consolidating the language elsewhere from the ordinance, just reiterating it.
I think it changed too, obviously, when we re, moved the number from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent. So, a lot of towns have additional language in their steep slope where, you know, they say like twenty percent over is not buildable. Uh, but they give, that they create like an area in between those two, like the fifteen to twenty-five, where there's additional restrictions that apply. You know, something like this. So, the only, I guess the only area that question on it is, uh, permitted activities, D, single family residential development. And, you know, and preferences for performance standards, you know, five. And again, this is number D, all primary accessory building, subting systems. Basically, it's not like they, structures and homes can be built on a percent, a percent slope. I think that's taken us that, that back. From, uh, especially from what the master plan looking for, you know, definitely stuff away from ridge tops and rooftops.
I'm having a deja vu that, 'cause we, I mean, we did this a couple of years ago, this one. And I think we, I think we kind of had the same conversation. That, and we, that's why we didn't move forward on it. And I think probably what happened is just we picked this up again without, like, noting that we needed to to look at it a little bit more than what we had originally done.
I think we're, we're pulling out more detail in, in doing this. Especially performance standards, I think are a, a strong area. Such as, uh, the driveway, I mentioned driveway and, uh, also the seventy-five foot length. I don't think that shows up else. No mistake. Ed, to your point, I think if you read part, uh, you know, section four, part D, that's essentially saying if somebody buys a existing lot, vacant lot, that they, if, it's up to them to determine. 'Cause we, we wouldn't see an application for that. But essentially, we're saying it's up to them, it's on them to confirm that that lot is the intent.
Well, and they'd be held to the performance standards.
Yeah.
Right, but it's basically saying, well, if they can determine that it won't have an adverse effect. And I think it's very different if you, if you look at it from the, an applicant's perspective to a planning board's perspective, what an adverse impact is or isn't. I think that would, that would bring us back to, that's, that almost brings us back again to the applicability of how this only applies to major subdivisions and new site plans. I don't know, I can't remember if we talked about it. If, if there are slopes that exist that are twenty-five percent or greater, should all subdivision applications be required to come forward because of the severity of that slope? So, not just a major site plan, should any subdivision application that impacts twenty-five percent or greater slope be required? That, and then, then we could determine if there is adverse impact. And that, that, that's the way to close a loophole per se on single family construction, but.
And then for that, I have to go and look at the stuff recs to see, we talked about the dirt critical areas and what additional assessments that they require and everything. But if I can sure this carve-outs in language for minor, um.
So, do we wanna, does the board wanna pull this? And just spend a little more time, next year, uh, I mean, how are we? I think it's, it seems like there's a lot of questions going on right now.
Yeah, I think it's important to do it. I think it's important to get it right. I think more and more of the application we're seeing, I can't think of, there's been very few that haven't had these sort of somewhere on there.
Yeah.
On the app on it, conceptual designer reviews, whole cases. I think right now, for me, it always comes up as a question, it's an unfit for building. We say it's unfit for building, but we're allowing, we may allow driveways where we may take it only for, uh, for the impact of that. So, I think we do need to clarify it. Look at the intent of whatever master plan action I was on. But I feel like this is, me, I was the builder, come into the case and read that and read this. I would figure to muddy it up for me instead of clarify it, I think.
What's anyone else's feelings?
I think if, uh, I'm okay with tabling it because I think numerous people have questions, but I do think it should probably fall then to number one on our list for just making sure we do close the loop next year.
Work on it more.
Yeah, I mean, I know we kind of did that last year, we did a priorities list. Building height was on it, number one.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I would say that, you know, we have had an enormous amount of cases coming in for review.
Yeah.
Part of me in the back of my mind that has been getting caught up on the fact that, 'cause a major is what, three or more lots, correct?
Yeah.
And we're getting a lot of, or it's very common to come in and have somebody split two lots.
Four, four and one.
Four or more, so even if three lots subdivision, I mean, that, that, you know, in my mind, that's, in some areas, that can be a drastic change. And they kind of skate by and wouldn't be covered by this whatsoever.
Okay, so, does anyone feel strongly to move this forward? So, let's not? Okay?
Do we need to make a motion to, or table?
Table.
I think let's, it, do we need to take a vote at the end of which ones move forward, or?
I don't think so. Three?
I think we usually do, but I think it is, you know, I can't remember if the ballot report or articles now say, program of planning board with a vote or if it just says program of planning board, so it might just be easier to.
Oh, right, you're right, it does say.
Yeah, I know there is that, but I don't know when we vote on those.
But I think for that, vote, we want to make sure.
How would we vote at the end of this meeting?
Sure.
On three separate amendments?
Right.
And then we can vote to table it.
Although we're gonna get legal review of the ones that we're gonna put forward, so.
Chapter twenty-six would be there.
So, we probably don't want to vote on it until after, right? But we can probably vote to table this right now.
And we don't want to waste the lawyer's time or our, or the town's money.
Reviewing this.
Yep.
And we do have a dedicated SRPC representative now that, especially if our case load lessens, we can, uh, hopefully.
Doesn't sound like it's lessening.
We're getting into building season.
Want a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we table the proposed, uh, warrant to article, steep slope protection.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Driveway setback.
Um, so, uh, this will go into article two. Um, and it's just an immediate issue of two, um, identical statements. Um, driving setback. So, what you see in here is all of, um, section, article two, section C, if I can apply, district. Minutuses, requirements, and then requirements. You see here, each single parcel of land is required in driveway. And you have, um, three, I guess, some conditions in driveways. Shared driveways will be kept on common boundary, shared driveways, put, these are, these are, these are record. These already exist. It's the underlying, added driveways and accesses, including any, any recurring placed at a minimum of ten feet away from property. The same statement is in, uh, article two, section E, for commercial industrial zone. Get, uses, requirements. You see down here at the bottom. Um, virtually identical driveway conditions. Shared driveway with a boundary, uh, shown with the record. And then driveway accesses, including any recurring, shall be placed at a minimum of ten, probably eight property.
How do we place the, uh, apron ten feet away on a shared driveway?
The shared driveway will be on the common boundaries of the property line, right?
That isn't what that says.
But the, um, the first of the three driveway conditions sets that standard. So, if we look just above what I'm, what, what we are adding, what you are adding, it says shared driveways will be kept to the common boundary. So, it's gonna be on top of the common boundary. You can't, you can't make a ten feet, because it's on top of it. This, driveways and accesses regarding. This, driveways and accesses regarding non-common driveways, not on shared driveways.
I see Buzz's point though, we do have two, we take shared driveway, shared driveway. Should we use it, instead of just saying driveway, should we say?
Not shared?
Not, but yeah.
Well.
Independent of.
Or independent driveway, yeah, so.
So.
I, I get, I get if somebody reads it, it's a little confusing.
Well, in the definitions section though, we've created separate definitions, driveway and common driveway. That's, these are additions as well.
So then should we update the shared to be common?
Yeah.
Interesting. Um, I was thinking the same thing, but I felt like it was, it was handled because if you look just above it, it said the required driveway may be either a single or common slash shared driveway. Could we add common in the sub bullets?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, you can do, you can do that to create letter. Or, or we could, uh, add a definition, say common slash shared driveway. That's a, so that the definition at least captures both of them. So wherever you see shared or common, they're interchangeable. If you cut, if you capture the definition, that might actually.
I think it'd be in favor of on both, both of these sections, doing the common slash shared because it is literally a line above it. And then in the, if, under article six, the definitions, you could do com- you could leave it as common driveway, but then the first thing you say, also shared driveway, in parentheses or something. I've seen that before, so you always on those. Have, you don't have a hyphenated word in the definitions.
Okay. So you wanna change, change it in two places?
I thi- I think it makes sense, you know, I guess in both, I mean, between the residential and the commercial district, they're almost identical in terms of the three sub bullets. I think we should just mimic the common da- uh, slash shared for those top two. Uh, num- num- enumerated points, I guess.
Yeah, cause who, who, who would really have to do a word search through the rest of the document to see where shared and common?
That's all I'm thinking about, I don't wanna miss something, so.
Yeah.
I, I, I feel like by covering the definition, you're golden, but if you want me to do it, if that's what you want, it, I mean, it could be done.
What, why are we adding common driveway? For benefit?
As, as a definition?
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't list, it's not being added into the, it's not being added into the, um, the language of the amendment, correct?
No, it's not, but it was.
Do we have it somewhere?
We, we would have to amend the current zoning to change it.
Are you, you're talking, the question, and it was, why are we adding definitions?
Yeah.
Um.
Oh, it's in drive, it's under driveway, in the one spot.
Yeah. I.
It's, it's not involved, it's not in this section at all, and in the zoning regs, it's only in, it only shows up once. So the open space subdivision is one spot where, such as driveways, common, uh, driveways, stuff, common driveway providing access to no more than two residential lots shall be allowed.
But do we define common driveway in the definition section?
We have shared driveways in other places.
Yeah, I think everywhere else, it's shared driveway, shared driveway.
Sounds like we, there would have to be some word searching to figure out where we use common, where we use shared, and where we use common, shared.
Well, I think, to your point, I think adding it as a parentheses after common, or vice versa, shared driveway in parentheses, comma, common. I think if you're doing the definition, capture it wherever it is throughout the document. So regardless of whether we say shared or common, or common slash shared, throughout the document, it needs the definition, the definition is very important. You guys sort of put it in the definition.
Thank you for coming.
So.
Yeah, I think if we leave the other language the way it is, I think in the minimum, yeah, in that article six definitions for common driveway, the first thing should be in parentheses, also shared driveway. It's good, yeah, it's if you go down to some articles.
Yeah, some, some, sometimes we reference, but back and forth, right?
Yeah, it's just like in building height.
Shared driveway, see, see, cut, shared driveway.
Just like in the proposed building height definition, we mentioned grade plan in building height definition, but then for grade plan, we also see, see also building height. Uh, it's a similar thing there, we're just showing that there's a connection.
It is, but I know we don't have the definition currently for driveway. Okay, we cut that.
So, what was the conclusion?
I mean, I guess if you wanna type it out, we could then see if everybody see what, so under, right on, where we do the co- definition for common driveway, after the, um, the colon there, the, right before A, we would put in parentheses, als- parentheses, also shared driveway. Right, and yeah, if you capitalize it, it was.
Also referred as shared driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
Too late to add shared driveway as a definition and define shared driveway, then for common driveway, just say, see, shared driveway.
I guess we've proven that it's vice versa, right, in a couple places?
But if you, if you just say also referred as.
I mean, we're, we're creating this definition, why don't we just change it to shared driveway instead of common driveway? And put the common in parentheses.
Yeah.
Should we then flip, where we do common slash shared, flip it to say shared, and now just leave it?
What, what should we do?
Yeah.
It's, it's just comes down to that.
Well, everywhere, everywhere else, so we, we use shared, we use the, the term common driveway once, we use shared driveway.
So.
I think shared.
Shared should be out front.
Yeah.
Parma should be in parentheses.
Yep. Agreed. Perfect.
Boundards? Like in subracks, common driveway, I don't know much, share common driveway. These are the kinda things you find if you.
But one thing I wanna just bring back to the point that Buzz started making is that, uh, you know, the first one, it's almost a hierarchy criteria.
Yeah.
In, in the zoning, right? So, the shared driveway will be kept to the common boundary, that's the main thing. Shared driveways will put in each owner's deed of record, that's another thing. The driveway and accesses, if you can't put them, you know, minimum of ten feet, then that's okay because you've already, for a common driveway, you can't. Right, cause it's on a common driveway. Am I saying that right, Blair, or, or?
Yeah.
Not describing it, the hierarchy part of it at all?
Um, I guess you just say it was independent, I didn't say it was a hierarchy, but, um, I just think that a person would interpret it that if you say that shared driveways, common drivers are gonna be on the common boundary, that sub condition three doesn't apply. If you're a common driver, then it's, hey, you're already dicta- you're already stipulated that has to be on the common driveway.
But if it doesn't apply, they keep working their way down until they find the one that does apply, which will be this.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Then you go to definitions, we define, so shared driveway specifically defined, driveway specifically defined, saying one lot, shared driveway is saying two lots.
Okay, I'm good. This makes me think that, why do we only have driveways called out in residential or cultural and commercial, not like town district and?
Well, I was gonna ask.
We have a town district.
No, we don't have a town, I'm just curious, we, we talk about driveways in those zones, but a town center district under requirements, we don't even mention.
I, I need.
Something I was thinking.
I'm actually looking, I'm on page thirty of, uh, the thing for where it says open space, I just, driveway, common drivers.
That's just weird thing in notes.
Oh, yeah, I'll actually look to see.
I don't wanna add things to.
Yeah, a lot of that, we can see, you'll see driveways, it's sort of like ancillary.
I can see it anywhere but a.
Uh, put it in town D. A section regarding like, uh, segments.
So they scrapped the part of the driveway, it says it has to be two.
I guess if you look at it to town center in terms of what permitted, is a mix between those two districts, so I can see that, how.
Requirements.
I have a couple of questions. Um, on the, the commercial industrial zone, I apologize for not being here on the twenty-second. Um, we refer to residents and such, and it's, to me, it's kinda confusing, um, under on the, when we're actually talking about commercial industrial zone. Seems a little, here then.
Oh, when we get down to yours.
Sorry, could you back that up a little bit?
Oh, I see.
So we, we're talking about, you know, under the commercial industrial zone, so we talk about residential, then we talk about commercial, um, but on the third page, number one B, we're talking about the parcel, and then it's in the last sentence, the required driveway may be either a single or common shared driveway, serving no more than two residents, but we're talking about the commercial industrial zone. So is that only related to if there's a house built in a commercial industrial zone? Or if there's a residential house built in that commercial industrial zone? And not necessarily a theater or office building?
Yes, yeah, it, within the commercial zone, it's almost like intern- in this section, subsection B for internal driveways, instead of two residences, you mean two uses.
Yeah, two uses, yeah, two permitted uses.
Resident, a residence is even a permitted use. And that's just, I think, s- copy and pasting, you know, this was copy and pasted from the residential language at one time. Have you seen that, Blair, where we're talking about?
Sorry, no.
So if you, if you scroll down, or yeah, keep sc- keep scrolling down.
Scroll down, scroll, keep scrolling down.
To your last pa- it's on your last page. Go on.
Keep going. So the one B, the last sentence, it speaks to residents? And it should be uses? Cause we're talking about the commercial industrial zone in that section.
It's kind of a technicality, but, uh.
Very good for results.
Right.
Somewhat of a loophole, somebody really wanted to push that point.
Sounds like a good housekeeping.
Yeah.
That to take care of.
What do we determine on that, stuff like housekeeping? I mean, does that just happen as part of the overall, like would stuff reorganized?
Uh, I think that's why we held off on these, was the last year, the year before, was to do, I think we did a housekeeping year.
Yeah.
A bunch of changes that weren't substantive necessarily, but they were reorganizing stuff around.
Cause we actually had a warrant, right, that said, permit us to basically clean up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then, so do you, so do folks agree that that should be turned into uses and not residents?
Yeah, but they're all gonna do it, if they consider it substantive change.
I think you are, I think you're creating a holding so many that you have advertised.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then the question is, do we wanna do that and hold it on the twenty-sixth?
I, I don't think we can at this point.
Okay. All right.
We would have to go through the same process.
Kevin, jot that one down, we're gonna try and get to that next year.
Yeah, so housekeeping, that's a housekeeping.
If you go backlot subdivision, here about twenty feet access, right? The backlot sub- subdivision, the other lot created must contain a minimum of twenty feet of frontage, including curb cut, for an approved access to a minimum of two acre lot. Well, if you have twenty feet, how do you get ten feet off each side? Cause your driveway's gonna be twelve feet wide. You won't meet the requirements, right?
I think we had mentioned an exception for that.
So the hospital zoning for that?
Yeah, I think a lot of those, yeah.
Backlot's usually a shared driveway on an existing driveway, isn't it?
It doesn't say, I mean.
One of them?
Doesn't have to be.
No, they have to be.
That's why I'm just kinda reading, if we have it here, it's gonna, this, for any backlot subdivision, they'll automatically have to go to zoning.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we did men-
So there's.
Somewhere along, mention not, except for backlot.
I think I, I might even been the one to bring up backlot.
Yeah, we don't have it here saying it's an exception.
Right.
Um, we could, in some places in the subdivision ordinance, uh, regulation, we do throw in the language, or this, for example, the seventy-five foot one, we say no portion of a lot created under this regulation shall be less than seventy-five feet. In with, except as provided for subsection blah blah blah, creation of backlots is, we could, you can add language saying, except as provided. I guess we had to figure out the reference because this is zoning. You, sorry to bring up something else, but that's, you know, just a.
No.
I think that one, though, we could sneak in here as an amendment, though, because it's just, it's, it's just a clarification language within the definition we're already adding under this.
Right, cause we're supposed to make this as clear as possible, so the fact that residents don't have to go to zoning again and again for all these things. We're trying to not burden, I mean.
Yeah.
The zoning is for certain reasons you go to zoning, you know, that.
It should be an exception on the rule.
Well, what we could do, for the clearest, like, we could put something in there. There are one of this, this, you know, except for backlot.
Backlots.
That's what I was thinking too, just.
Simple, like a dialogue in the comments on that. On the.
That's, yeah, I think we should, at the end there, just say.
Yeah, so just tack, just tack it on the back there, just.
Yeah.
So, but, uh.
Except for, I think we call them back, what do we say, except for?
What, what's it called there? You mean?
Backlots.
Backlot. So you, backlot subdivision for single family homes.
It's a backlot.
Driveways.
Where are you gonna add it?
We're at the end of the, the definition.
Um, does, do backlots apply to commercial? Single family homes?
Single family homes.
So it wouldn't go in this section?
No, it would go in the first section.
What do we think?
So we just, except for backlots.
Right. That's why we call them in fourteen point two point four in the subdivision, we call them back, the title is backlots permitted, and then it goes into, we don't specifically call it backlot subdivision.
But that would be minimum backlots.
Twenty foot is minimal.
Right.
Yeah.
So what if you have somebody who's gonna do fifty foot?
Well, then, then it easily happens, it's a matter.
Well, then, we're saying that they don't have to have a ten feet to it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Except in use of minimum.
That's the other side of the case, right?
No.
Exactly.
So I've just.
Leave it.
Does a backlot subdivision have to be reviewed by the planning board?
Yeah.
So then.
Unfortunately, that's a catch for that.
I would just leave it.
Except in use of minimum with, with backlot.
What'd you say?
I would just leave it as this.
Without the exception?
Yeah.
I just worry that does drive up.
And then they just go to the zoning, cause those aren't that common.
We've had like, maybe.
We've had backlot subdivisions, but not where it's such a small.
Twenty feet, you know. Our last one we did was one.
No, we did a one piece of. But you're right, chances of us seeing one might be five years from now or something like.
Yeah. Right, I mean, possibly, but.
I'd rather encourage people by this regulation to have a ten foot setback.
Right, right.
Instead of including ways to get around it.
Right.
No, I'm with you on that, absolutely.
Okay, let's just.
I like it, so, I seriously think, so it's.
Let's just put the period back before that, so.
Yeah.
So if somebody wants twenty feet as the minimum, they would require a variance.
Yeah.
Or they provide a greater frontage to be determined.
Kind of open it up.
Or, yeah, or.
And we did talk, uh, about, so, uh, this is specifically driveways, the next step is roads, which would be in the site plan, subdivision regs, which we don't have to do a warrant out of before. But that is gonna stay on our agenda for adding, or talking about at some point this year, hopefully early. Uh, cause I think driveways, it's good practice to have a setback. More importantly, I think, is a road, you know, getting a road dropped in, you know, next to your house. And not having, not, you know, not really a setback there as, uh, as more commercial.
But that's a separate.
It's a separate, yeah, I mean, just.
Yeah, there's a lot that goes into that with driveways.
Saying again, so we remember it, and keep it in our heads, that, that's gonna be subdivision, site plan. Separate process does not require a dollar.
Okay, any input from the public? Seeing none, meaning seeing none in public? Okay, I think this makes it easier to not feel like we have to have a second meeting, but let's, um, see what the attorney says.
Well, if anything, it's gonna be, no, we should have more divisions, so, it's on the agenda, it should be pretty quick.
So they consider a second public hearing on junior twenty-six?
If we help them.
We haven't decided yet.
We don't, I mean, we don't need to.
It's just a matter of getting, you know.
It's very, you know, very basic, I don't, I don't. Well, we'll send them to them, and if we, we don't, we'll.
So it does need to be on our agenda for the twenty-sixth, or?
So should we just take a vote tonight?
I think we just take a vote tonight that we move these two forward.
Chairman, I move that we, um, move forward with the zoning amendments for building height and driveway setbacks, uh, as I reviewed and amended for the twenty twenty-two, uh, warrant article, got it?
I'll second.
Motion to second, those, uh, in favor indicate aye. Those opposed, okay, that's unanimous, so, one, two, seven.
We'll have to vote on the one we tabled.
Seven to zero. We already tabled.
We voted to table.
All right, that's it, we're done. Updates. Charlie?
Uh, nothing, but did you close the public hearing?
Public hearing's closed for the zoning amendments. Thank you.
Just like that.
I've got nothing.
I did it, just like that.
Did we need to vote on, uh, schedule for this year, or did we just say going forward on? Did we close that out first?
The overall schedule?
Yeah, did we need to?
I was actually gonna bring it up, um, so right now, and we had, it's starting to get close, it's, it is subject to being put on it. Uh, I think the one sticky point is that Ed brought up was, uh, in the elections, and when to have that quote unquote on meeting, or the meeting.
Oh, yeah, as a March meeting.
This is.
Um, I think a concern was the first one, which I don't want to talk ahead, I want to say it's the ninth. Uh, both three points, basically day after, and then I think the second option was, I want to say it's on the second, but I think it's, well, basically the first one. Last day, March, so I can make that as a quick change, if you wanna do that, no big deal, I just never really got any. Yeah, yeah, what you guys want to do with it?
So basically, we can't have a meeting on the night at all, right?
No, I think what we did last year, cause I think we ran into this last year, and the people who were up for reelection couldn't like, they, they couldn't vote. I think they saw.
Right, having, you get sworn in.
Yeah, you couldn't get sworn in that time.
Until you got sworn in.
I think you continue on, it's all a waste. And that was, that was the question, that, so obviously we're SB two, it's just different.
Yeah.
So before it was, the session didn't end. The election didn't end until Saturday, after, after the meeting, that was the end of it. But the vote from Tuesday didn't really end until, until that was, now the question is, uh, so the second session is Tuesday, I'll change. I think it's an appeal period, like recounts and whatever, so.
Gotta do what we gotta do, I guess.
Right. I think it's fine to post it, and I think maybe that's, we continue to be asked again, as our PC, you were at first.
We'll have to monitor it.
Are we, uh, late in that session, and need to move it?
Yeah, right now, I'm looking at it now, it's actually March, March ninth, I have, uh, no business elected officers. And then, March twenty-third, so is that, it would, so if, if the officers are elected, they gotta go through the process, so then we don't have a meeting on the ninth, is that, is that my understanding?
You'll always have a.
I think we make it fine, so we're just, you know, like the officers get, if something happens. There's no business, there's no official.
No business, it's just the elected, yeah.
Usually election, the officers.
Yeah, we usually just go through the election of officers, or.
We go through the rules of procedure and.
Yep. So that schedule is the last one, I think you emailed to us a little while back, right?
Yeah, there actually, there were a couple, like, like I think I had twenty twenty-one and one spot here and there, I cleaned it up a little bit, uh, I'll resend it to you, you guys, you guys can take another look at it.
That'd be great. Yeah, I just wanna get it in my schedule too, sorry.
Yeah, I just know that, uh, they gotta get the, uh, the comp booklets set up and, uh.
Yeah.
Tell some people what the schedule was, plus further in twenty twenty-seven, uh, so if we go outside and look for the next meeting, that's what I'll. So, just so I can get it straight, uh, and typically, where we have that no business, so again, if someone's submitting an application now, in February, you can go to the second meeting and not that first.
Right.
Yeah.
Easy enough, okay, fair, so that's something even on the fly that I can kind of, it does change in that.
That's up to you.
Okay.
Do we know, do we know what signups are for, uh, election, for boards? No, that's okay, I'll check.
You guys better get in there.
Tight race, I want to see the debate, um.
Is it just get them to January?
I thought that was time.
Yeah, I think it's the end of January.
End of January, yeah, didn't miss it, that's all.
That's what the.
No, it's for ten days, you have to sign up at that time.
Yeah, there's a window there, I can't remember. Um, if we're good on that, the only thing I had a question on was more of just, I was just looking through some of the old agendas, is we have the, do we still have the Lawson case sitting out there as?
So he's, he's coming on the not, uh, February ninth, and that was the, the last, his last, so.
That was our, we extended it or continued it to then, okay.
Yeah, and he, uh, he knows, I told him, I said, hey, you know, boards have, on target, good with it, boards are, they good with it, they would, you know, he would need you to come in at least. Actually a little more guy, so I'm, so he's, he's probably, uh, cameras back a little.
Yeah, we met, uh, I think you weren't here at that meeting, but.
No, I think I missed, yeah, I think we were talking.
We had that discussion at the meeting, and we decided that, uh, yeah, we're not gonna be able to grant him any further continuance, unless he came here and.
Okay.
Provided some compelling reasons.
I know he was waiting for, yeah, I know he was waiting for legal opinion, I think we're all curious to hear where that goes, so.
Okay, I don't have any updates, I'm gonna, Sue sent some, uh, there'll be a public hearing hosted by the Conservation Commission and the Select Board meeting on Monday, January twenty-fourth at seven o'clock, uh, to discuss the expenditure of up to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a conservation fund, or conservation easement project identified, uh, at this time as P twenty. That's code for something. Uh, the other one is, uh, in celebration of Noddy Ham's three hundredth Conservation Commission, and Trails Committee will be hosting a winter walk along new trails of Marston property Saturday, February twelfth, I'm sorry, Saturday, February nineteenth from nine AM to eleven AM, please dress accordingly, snowshoes or snow boots are recommended, please watch for posted announcements with details about the length and difficulty of the walk, a signup roster might be requested. So those are, uh, updates from Conservation Commission, I don't have any other ones, Ed.
Yeah, the only other thing Sue mentioned was, uh, were, were dates that are important to us, for the town, school, the Woodford session, I believe, town is probably, clarify this, Tuesday, February eighth, seven PM, no date of two eleven, on Woodford session two five, different date, right? Uh, February fifth, nine AM, Sunday eight, two twelve, nine AM, obviously, uh, town voting is on.
Cool.
At the school.
Does that mean warrant articles, like the list has, is that posted?
Uh, we, well, coming to the Select Board, uh, we actually went over all our warrant articles last night, I mean, excuse me, on Monday, that we spoke about too quick. Um, you know, I mean, you're gonna be able to see those posted, you know, they're not gonna go through all twenty of them or whatever. Um, and there was three citizen petitions on that particular, that are already signed up.
Okay.
Um, so.
Here's issue with the other one.
Uh, one is about roads.
Oh, fantastic.
Go figure, another one is about capping, uh, conservation funding, and. Oh, I forgot what the third one was, but it's, it's listed, I mean, it's all right there, I'll find it.
Ed, did you have anything else?
Yeah, we talked about masks, and we are extending the mask mandate. Um, and it is, we found out through legal and through the, uh, yeah, whatever, that the, is something that we can enforce in town for people to wear masks in these buildings, even if they don't want to, we do have the right to enforce it. We will be having a meeting with all the chairs, so expect that coming up, Dirk.
Okay.
On how to enforce and how to regulate your meeting, because it is your room and your form when it comes to this, um, agenda.
Masks are required at all town facilities, correct, including the dump?
Nobody was wearing them at the dump.
Recycling center? Recycling dump.
Again, we do have, uh, our work cut out on this, because you will find, you know, as, uh, like, I'm very happy tonight that everybody that came in here wore a mask. Last night at the school hearing about the possible addition, everybody except for one person was wearing a mask. Uh, last night at the pla- uh, Budget Committee, we only, we had three members that refused, um, we kinda let it slide, uh, just because of what needed to get done on that, that, that night, uh, but it, trust me, it did not go unnoticed that those members decided not to wear them. Uh, that will be addressed in the future for the next meeting, and it will be, expected deliberation to be all masks, if you're not wearing a mask, you will be able to attend maybe from Zoom or something like that, but if you wanna attend, you will be wearing a mask.
But how is it gonna be enforced?
Well, I mean legally, we can ask the police to remove you for disturbance of the peace. It's not, I mean, you are disturbing the peace, it's, I mean, there's, um.
So what would you, what would you do? Put a hole in the meeting and call the police and?
Yeah, I mean, even if it came down to Dirk, if somebody was in here and they refused to leave for the meetings, I mean, he has the right to call off the meeting.
Other boards, have Jeanne Tomlin, uh, stopped.
Yeah. Just ended right there, and that's what the, I mean, the Budget Committee could've last night if they wanted to, just said, because of those members, the Chair of the meeting could've canceled, but he chose not to, but that's his decision, cause he's the Chair, but going forward, we do. We will be more requiring, and again, this is something, the mask policy, people have to understand, nobody want, I mean, we understand about, you know, wearing it and stuff like this. And again, once this, once the cases start to decline, I mean, or whatever, it's gonna be gone, we don't want this to be going on for, you know, in the summer or in like this, we'd even want it going on another month if we don't have to. But, you know, it's the protection of other people, you know, and that's really what it's about, it shouldn't be a political statement, it should, that, it actually should be caring for your fellow citizens of Noddy Ham, you know, and their families by coming into social groups like this, just to wear the mask for these occasions. You know, what you do on your own time, but when you're in these environments, you should wear it, and it's due to the respect of everybody that we have to work with here, and do our jobs that were assigned. Not political, it's not this, and people should, you know, really address that, it's not being, trying to make their own little political statement of, you know? It should, you should, you should put the town and the people of the town first, besides your, your own, for the state, some people just don't feel that, that that's right, they wanna put themselves selfishly first before the people of the town.
Right, and I, I just wanna reinforce that, you know, people elected us into these positions, we're not, we're not here, you know, uh, for, for specific agenda, but we should be able to serve the people that have elected us, and not, uh, just not do our duties, cause that's what we're here for, that was our responsibilities.
Responsibility we signed up for.
Right.
I guess that was kind of the question I'm asking, if, if we have to call off a meeting because people aren't respecting the regulation, then we're kinda shirking our duty.
There is.
We can recess the meeting until the police come in to remove them.
Right.
And then continue with meeting.
And again, we don't wanna see that happen, nobody wants to see that happen, I don't wanna be on Fox News or freaking whatever, cause of some stupid like that.
Yeah.
No. Right.
Nobody does, you know, it's not the case, you know, and if you respectfully don't wanna wear a mask in the building, just don't show up. You know, do your own duty, sit at home, watch it on TV or whatever like this, you can email your comments in, we'll read them aloud, we're gonna get different access, but just don't come in here and just, you know, that's what I have a hard time with people, just coming in on there, and saying, you know, basically, I don't care, and I'm gonna do whatever I want, you know? There should be a amount of respect for everybody else, especially when ninety-nine percent of the, the room is wearing it, you know?
Well, I do have to say that the zoning board meeting that was last month, uh, was not, was not able to be held because the members did not, decided not to wear masks, and no quorum was there, so the meeting had to be canceled.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and that's a, that's a terrible thing.
You've got, you've got an applicant and, in the public, who show up and can't be hurt.
Okay, I understand, and, you know, we're not enforcing what type of mask you have to wear, whatever, just put a face covering on.
And I think with the science, and if they were setting for, in this ring, if anyone did that, this, you wearing this or even wearing this, affect the others, it's not really affecting myself, it's, it's, you know, I'm asymptomatic, and I have it, and, whatever, it's, uh, it's an easy, easy step
Sure.
to try to minimize risk for everybody, and that, I think that's, that's what we're asking.
Yeah, and if, you know, if it bothers you to wear it for a long period of time, you just step out of the meeting for, and go outside for ten minutes to get some fresh air. No one's gonna think that's against you, no one's gonna hold that, so it's not, there's plenty of alternative ways to get around, besides coming in and just being plain, straight out defiant, because you just don't wanna, you wanna buck the system on every rule that doesn't, you feel needs to apply to you. You know, and that's basically how I look at it, that, that's all these people are doing, so, but that's my opinion, so, that's not the opinion of the board, that's me speaking.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, John.
The only other thing I had, and, still, John's on the list from the Select Board, um, but a big thanks to, to the Freedom Committee for the, all they did for the bonfire and, and everything, the fire department, police departments, it was really great to see everybody come together, and again, it's outside, safe place. Recreation Department providing hot chocolate, and, seemed like a good time, it was very cold night, but, safely, and, all people needed that, kinda.
And free Christmas tree pickup.
Free Christmas tree pickup, um, so there was that, and then obviously, shout out to the road crews and everything, some pretty awful weather, and they, they respond, or, or services there too.
Gary?
Uh, just, kind of a short note on CIP, this, believe just maybe one meeting left, uh, highlight two things, to, to highlight two things, one would be, uh, uh, well, school addition, which we'll look for, you'll see it coming up, um, for this coming year. And a second ambulance, uh, added to the fleet for, because of the amount of calls that have, the increase of calls mostly.
That's actually a warrant article.
Okay.
For this year, adding a second ambulance.
I, I guess I'm too aware of it.
No. Yeah, just saying.
So, and the other thing that, um, Ed mentioned, uh, kickoff to three hundred, the, the bonfire Saturday night, there was good showing for that, um, uh, went a little longer than expected, but, and it was very cold.
It was very cold.
Thought it was a good turnout.
Buzz?
Uh, is there, are there any minutes to approve tonight?
That's what's next on the agenda, so that's a great segue. Yes, we have minutes to approve.
Then I have nothing to add.
Uh, you guys stole my thunder with the, uh, the calendar, uh, so it looks like we at least have something there, I kind of already submitted, we can go fast, and, we can't, we can't really say, like, a little subject to change, so, you can print a few change on the line, just let me know. The big thing is all the applicants, so ahead of time, going to lunch.
And then what are the, I think we've gotten minutes edited, would.
I don't remember.
Twelve, eight, I think it's one day.
So I got eleven, ten, twelve, eight. So I got eleven, ten, twelve, eight, twelve twenty-two.
Twelve eight was our, uh, twelve twenty-two was the, our zoning meeting, specials for that, twelve eight was, uh, fifty-nine. What was the other day?
Eleven, ten.
Eleven, ten, so it was all.
That was a small change, if you had Dirk had, and I took care of it.
Okay.
I can't remember it. Chair, I'll move that we accept the minutes of November twelve, I'm sorry, that we accept the minutes of November tenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, December eighth, twenty twenty-one, and December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as.
Any seconds, Gary, those in favor, could I?
I.
Opposed, that's all unanimous, thank you for getting those out.
And make motion adjourn.
Motion adjourn, second. We adjourn. Thanks, everybody.